Alrighty, welcome, welcome everyone. This is the September twenty-fourth Board of Commissioners meeting for the town of Waxahaw. Thank you very much for coming. We will go ahead and call this meeting to order, and I would like to invite you for our opening ceremony. We will give the pledge of allegiance and an opening prairie of thanks and praise. Thank you very much. Are there any amendments or adjustments to the agenda tonight?
Yes.
May I have two?
Two.
Add item F-three, proclamation in honor of Ms. Rosa Cherry Covington. And then also removing item G-two, the Union County Tax Department revaluation update. He'll, he'll be back on October twenty-second for that presentation.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Can I get a-
I have one.
Oh, sorry?
I have one.
Please.
Um, under, here it is. Okay, the removal of proclamation two zero two four zero one three in support of National Breast Cancer Awareness Month from the consent agenda and move that to F-four under recognitions.
Certainly.
And then? Town attorney, you say make a motion? Okay. And then, under old business, I make a motion, under old business, uh, consider adoption of proposed amendments to the Board of Commissioners, rules of procedure, uh, both rule thirteen items that are on the agenda. I make a motion to remove that from the agenda, uh, for tonight and propose that it be added to, uh, a Board of Commissioners retreat item. To the retreat. No, we don't have to.
Very well. So we have a motion on the floor to remove item I-one, the consider adoption of the proposed amendments for the Board of Commissioners, rules and procedures. Can I get a second?
No, no. Not I-one itself. I-one, rule thirteen.
So you wish to rule on rule thirty-four then?
Yes. Rule thirty-four and add appendix C to leave to the agenda just to remove rule thirteen.
Okay, I will restate. So we have a motion on the floor to remove item I-one, rule thirteen, order of business to add C, and then rule thirteen, order of business to remove I. Can I get a second?
And two.
Please, sorry.
No. Added to the retreat agenda.
Okay. We'll start over. Can I get a motion to remove old business, item one, the consideration of the adoption of the proposed amendments for the Board of Commissioners, rules and procedures, rule thirteen, order of business, item C, and rule thirteen, order of business to remove I, and postpone that consideration until the retreat, which will likely be scheduled in January of twenty-twenty-five?
That's fine.
Can I get a second?
Yeah, we just, we'll need a second. Just all in favor?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, the ayes have it. We will move that to the retreat. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as adopted?
No.
Or as amended?
As amended.
As amended.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The agenda is so approved. Adopted or amended agenda is so approved. Okay, next up, we have public comments. This is general public comments. Uh, you have three minutes to speak. Your comments are to be directed to the board at its entirety and not a single individual. Your comments are not to be coarse or profane. Public comments should be directed at the board. Um, this is also an official public meeting, and if it is interrupted, people will be asked to leave. And if they do not leave, they will be firmly requested by law enforcement to leave and potentially charged with a misdemeanor. So, those are the rules of public comments. First public comment tonight, we have a Kelly Shins- Shilohk? Kelly Shilohk? Did I get that right? Miss Kelly? No. I have an Erin Muldoon.
Thank you. My name is Erin Muldoon. I live in the Oaks on Providence. Um, I came tonight to comment on something that didn't sit quite right with me from the last meeting. Um, from what I understand, there is an organizational advisory board, OAB, whose members were chosen and appointed by the current Board of Commissioners. There are three positions that will be filled on the planning board. The OAB has vetted and recommended the three top-scoring individuals they feel would be best suited for these positions. Now, toward the end of the last meeting, one of the sitting commissioners asked, and I'm paraphrasing, "Do we have to take the recommendation of the OAB, or can we interview any of the candidates?" Now, why on earth you would not take the recommendation from the very people you appointed is beyond me. Is it that you're not capable of choosing the right people to vet the candidates? Or is it that you feel the OAB is not capable of the job you appointed them to do? Neither of these is an acceptable response. I hope I'm wrong in my assessment, but one of the candidates for the planning board is a former commissioner who was not one of the top three recommended, uh, candidates. And my gut tells me that you're working to get the former commissioner appointed to the planning board. And I just want to refresh some memories. She lost the election for her commissioner seat last year by a two-to-one vote, and then lost her bid for B-O-C-C the following year. So to me, it gives the appearance that you're trying to insert someone into a position who will align with the rubber stamping of high-density growth and pander to developers. There has not been a conditional rezoning in the former commissioner's four years of serving that she did not approve. And this is the very same commissioner, who, along with two others, all serving at the time, managed to get on the review board for Nextdoor during election time and had a say in what posts and comments were acceptable to publish. Seems like an ethics violation as well as a First Amendment violation. Why would elected officials who pledged an oath to uphold the Constitution be deciding what information is acceptable for publication? At the very least, it wreaks of a conflict of interest, poor judgment, and is yet again a slap in the face of the voters of Waxahaw. This type of behavior is not serving the residents. What is it going to take to get the message across that the people have spoken at the polls more than once? This former commissioner is not the correct choice for Waxahaw, Union County, in any capacity she does not represent what the people want. We are tired of not being heard, considered, when decisions about our town are being made. And I will again remind you that you work for us, and yet you continue to push your own personal agenda. Seems like every time certain commissioners don't get their way, they find a workaround. This behavior is old, tired, and very apparent to anyone watching. I am hoping my assessment is incorrect, but my experience with some of the elective representatives would tell me otherwise. I suggest you reevaluate who you believe you represent and work for when making decisions instead of continuously giving the proverbial finger to Waxahaw residents and giving developers everything they want.
Next up, we have a Regan Shaw.
Mayor, uh, can you remind me of that first person's name? I just want to check outside and make sure she's not out, out there.
Erin Muldoon, oh, uh, Kelly, and I think it's Shilohk?
Okay, I'll just double-check.
Shiloh room? Okay, we can come back to that if we need to, sorry. Regan Shaw.
Hi, my name is Regan Shaw. I was the Waxahaw resident who applied to have the Union County Pride Family Fun Festival last Saturday. The reason I applied to host this event was that I thought, as a mother, it was important that everyone feel safe and welcome in Waxahaw. Unfortunately, that is not what happened last Saturday. Due to the decisions made by this council, our queer residents and allies were harassed at what should have been a joyous event. The local god-hates-the-gays groups caused enough disturbance inside the fenced-in area that it affected our ability to hold the event. The weekend before, at the Pride event in Indian Trail, protesters came from around the country to hurl hateful messages at our LGBTQ community. Their goal was to terrorize with their words as much as they could in order to drive people away from the event. They even told little kids that they were going to get raped. The town of Indian Trail wisely kept these crazy protesters out of the festival area. So last week, right before the, our event in Waxahaw, when I heard that protesters would be allowed inside the grounds, my initial thought was, what could the commissioners possibly be thinking that is so unsafe? I came to the festival anyway extremely concerned as to whether it was even worth proceeding. Protesters quickly set up shop within a couple feet of where I stood, at a ring-throwing tent, where you try to land a, a ring around a traffic cone. Their signs said I was sexually abusing children, which of course is false. Now, I want you to imagine the scenario at a state fair. You get your corn dog, and you're walking around the grounds with your eight-year-old, and they tell you they want to play some games. You begin to approach the ring-throwing tent, but a person is standing at the front of the tent with a sign that says, "Anyone playing this ring-throwing game rapes children." Your eight-year-old says, "Mommy, what does rape mean?" You usher your child away from the tent, then report to security that there's a weird person at the ring-toss tent disturbing the families trying to play games. That's the key word here, disturbing. At the Waxahaw event, I asked the law enforcement officers what qualified as disturbing. They told me protesters would have to get physical. Common sense tells us that a person does not have to get physical to disturb an event. Signs and shouting can be so offensive that they can interfere with the function of an event. Those protesters falsely accusing people of sexual assault should have been removed. We were very lucky that violence did not break out on Saturday. It is not easy to stay silent when you are constantly being told you abuse kids and are going to hell in the middle of a family fun event. It is not easy to watch your event being invaded by people whose aim is to drive people away with their insults. In Starksville versus the city of Philadelphia, the U.S. Third Circuit Court of Appeals ruled, quote, "The right of free speech does not encompass the right to cause disruption," end quote. That's common sense and human decency. Protesters should not have been allowed to disrupt our event. Union County Pride and all the participants of the Family Fun Day deserve an official apology. Correct your mistakes and get it right next year. Waxahaw deserves better.
Thank you. Uh, next up, we have a Diane Jenko. Nope. Diane? Okay. Uh, we have a Kenneth Gabriel. Kenneth? Okay. Next up, we have a Sandy. Not gonna go for the last name here. A Sandy? Uh, let's see here, next up we have a Sophia Chabot.
Hi, um, my name is Sophia, and I'm a resident here of Waxahaw. My family and I moved here eight years ago from New York City. In the last seven years, we have happily lived here in our sweet little town of Waxahaw. If you know me, you know how much I love our sweet, family-friendly town. I have been very active and involved with our community. Shortly after moving here, I, um, shortly after moving here, I joined the Waxahaw Women's Club and have enjoyed serving our community with an amazing group of women for seven years. I'm here today because I'm sad and concerned about the Union County Pride Family Fun Day that took place this past Saturday, September twenty-first, in the Waxahaw Tower Community Corner. This event was not child or family-friendly at all. I was there at this event peacefully protesting against gender indoctrination hosted by the Gender Education Network, one of the sponsors of this event which focuses on children under twelve. They provide role models who educate on all aspects of transitioning. It's crucial to raise our voices to protect the innocence of childhood and stand against surgical mutilation and chemical castration of children. No child is born in the wrong body. As I stood at the family fun event with my sign that read, "Stop sexualizing children, let kids be kids", I witnessed a woman swinging from a hoop and silks, wearing fishnet stockings and mini shorts with her butt cheeks hanging out and spreading her legs, flaunting her vagina for the children to see. Why was this necessary at a children's event? As I walked around, the music being played was so vulgar, I was disgusted. I approached Dina, parts and rec manager, who was standing outside the gate at the event, and asked her if there were any guidelines regarding sexually explicit music at a children's event in town. And she said no unless it was disparaging of others. Here are the lyrics to Tootsie by Real X-Men, which was one of the songs I heard there. I'm not even sure if I can read it, 'cause you said there's no vulgar lan-, language. Can I read an excerpt?
I think the words can be implied.
Okay.
If you can speak around it as best as possible.
I'll just try to speak around it. "Tootsie roll, cookie smoke, give me what you got, B. Stripper pole, smoking drill, love a ratchet, that hoe. Throw that..." "Butt, I guess. Get that cash, her wop drippy drop, wop. Get ya home, I'm a bone, suck this tootsie pop, yeah. I'm a ratchet, that hoe, throw this butt. Get this cash, my wop drippy drop, wop. Get me home, I'm a bone, suck your tootsie pop, yeah. How many licks does it take till you get to the MF center of the tootsie pop? How many stacks will it take to get that butt shaking many?"
I think we get the idea. Thank you, Sophie.
I want to finish it, but. "Bust it, slide it, ride it, ride it. I'm a just trying to get inside it."
Okay.
Okay. As people are uncomfortable? Well, this was played in our town, and there were several other songs that were even worse than this one. I was appalled that this music was being played at a family fun event. Am I timed as up?
Yeah.
Alright.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, next up is a Rick Sapata. Didn't make it? Okay.
What I'm saying, that's-
Oh! Apparently that's been going around. Uh, next up is a John Woodstock? Or Woodstruff? Woodruff? Alright. Present. Ferris Bueller? Bueller? That was too easy. Anyway, uh, let's see here, next up, we have the adoption of the consent agenda, and it has been amended slightly. Can we get a motion to adopt the amended consent agenda?
So moved as amended.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. The consent agenda is now adopted. Next up, we have recognitions. Uh, believe in Ms. Emily Lernard. We have a presentation of our Human Resources Department.
Good evening. Emily Lernard, HR manager. I just want to introduce our new member of the HR department. This is Gabriella Gervais. Uh, she, um, is now the HR assistant. Uh, she's actually lived in Indian Trail her whole life. Um, and she actually hopes to move closer to Waxahaw in the future. She spent a majority of her career in healthcare and loved the patient-facing roles. She then transitioned into the construction field on the administrative side and cross-trained in HR, and that's where she kind of felt, uh, that passion for HR build. Um, and then now she, she found this role, um, and thought it would be, uh, suited for her, uh, career goals. Um, she's excited to grow in the career and better serve our Waxahaw employees and the community while creating positive relationships and getting involved. Gabriella, welcome! Thank you, I just want to say hello, and I'm just excited to be here and to work with everybody.
Welcome, welcome.
Enter, lady. Picture. Oh, I have a picture? Okay.
Next up, we have a presentation from Mr. Matt Hubert.
Good evening, thank you. I also am pleased to announce a new employee. Our very first facilities director is David Timchula. He comes to us, he lives locally here in South Creek, and he comes to us after ten years of service in, at Mariapps with, uh, in South Park. So he has a, a great breadth of experience, and he's really hit the ground running. We're proud to have him as part of Team Waxahaw. I think most of you seen and not heard, is that correct?
(laughing) That's her David.
Welcome, welcome. Alright, next up we have some presentations. Uh, it looks like we only have one tonight. Ms. Michelle Morris and Ms. Kathy Hightell.
Wait, no, no.
What, who? Oh, that's right, sorry, I missed my own notes. Next up, we have a proclamation. Uh, the one about Ms. Rosa. I don't have that number handy. I gotta hear them.
Alright, I am reading a proclamation in honor of Ms. Rosa Cherry Covington, who has been a longtime resident here in the town of Waxahaw. And Ms. Covington has reached her ninetieth birthday. Whereas Ms. Rosa Cherry Covington was honored by relatives and friends on the occasion of her ninetieth birthday on September fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four. Whereas she was born on September sixteenth, nineteen thirty-four in Union County, Waxahaw, North Carolina, and has been a resident of this community for most of her life. Whereas she is a graduate of Western Union High School of Waxahaw, North Carolina. Whereas she left the community to attend college at Catholic University, beginning her career with Howard University Medical Laboratory and Mobile Sickle Cell Unit, and worked for twelve years as a valued and significant team member. Whereas she returned to North Carolina to work in Greensboro at the historic L Richardson Hospital, serving the African-American community in the laboratory, then continued her work through North Carolina State Department of Corrections, Probation, and Parole, where she provided drug testing. Whereas she became the wife of Robert Covington, and this marriage was blessed with two children, Virginia and Reva. In addition to being a wife, mother, and professional, she has been an active member at Marvin A.M. E. Zion as a faithful Sunday School teacher, class leader, leader of leaders, missionary, lay council, deaconess, and a delegate at the annual conference for Marvin A.M. E. Zion Church. Whereas she served the Wade'sboro Monroe District in the lay council, coordinator for the Bureau of Supply for Missionary Department, and delegate for the Missionary Quadrennial in New Orleans, Louisiana. Whereas she has been active in civic responsibilities, serving as a judge at the polls, a poll worker in Waxahaw, and a volunteer with Fix It For Price in Waxahaw. Whereas during a long and productive life she has demonstrated in councilist ways a dedication to the welfare of others and has earned the respect and affection of people from all walks of life and ages. And whereas she has lived during most of the eventful century of the world's history and in her quiet way has been a force for good and stabilizing influence on those around her during these turbulent times. Now therefore I Robert J. Murray III, Mayor of the town of Waxahaw, North Carolina, deem it an honor and a pleasure- demonet honor and a pleasure to extend this proclamation to Ms. Rosa Cherry Covington on the occasion of her 90th birthday with sincere congratulations and best wishes for many more productive years. Duly adopted this 24th day of September, 2024. Ms. Covington is here this evening with us and if she would be so kind as to come forward so that we can also take a picture for her.
Wow! Can you imagine? Oh my goodness.
Yeah. You can do that now?
This is a great surprise. But don't be surprised because I asked to be a hunter. So, okay. It's so good to see everybody. Could I please get my Marvin family to the fan? Right quick? Am I... It's been such a long happy trip, you know, and I am, it's been quite a while since I was in the building, but I gotta come more often, okay? Okay? Be careful when you go down Waxaw Marvin Road because I've been watching, okay? Thank you guys for so much, okay? I forgot, I gotta take a picture.
I think I speak for most of the town when I say we can only hope to live such an honored and distinguished life many years to come. Thank you. Happy birthday. Okay. Next up, we have a proclamation recognizing breast cancer awareness. Who has that?
I have that one.
Thank you.
Yes, I, um, I ask for this to be removed from the consent agenda as I'll be celebrating my, um, four-year cancer versary this week, weekend. As a breast cancer survivor and, um, I went through treatment while serving on this board and so it's been important since that time that we recognize all of the survivors, uh, the warriors here in Waxaw who are battling breast cancer right now and all of the angels who've received their wings. So I just would like to go ahead and read the proclamation.
Please.
Whereas breast cancer touches the lives of Americans from every background and in every community across our nation. Whereas while considerable progress has been made in the fight against breast cancer, it remains the most frequently diagnosed type of non-skin cancer and second-leading cause of cancer deaths among women. Whereas thousands of women and men will be diagnosed with breast cancer this year and tens of thousands of women are expected to lose their lives to the disease. Whereas the exact causes of breast cancer are unknown, understanding its risks is essential to prevention. Older women and those who have a personal or family history of breast cancer are among those at greater risk of developing the illness. Early detection is also key in the fight against breast cancer. Getting recommended screening mammograms can help to detect breast cancer early. Women and men are encouraged to speak with their healthcare provider about breast cancer and to visit www.cancer.gov to learn more about symptoms, diagnosis, and treatment. And whereas this month, we stand with those who have been affected by breast cancer and we recognize the ongoing efforts of dedicated advocates, researchers, and healthcare providers who strive each day to defeat this terrible disease. In memory of the loved ones who have lost and inspired by the resilience of those living with the disease, let us strengthen our resolve to lead our nation toward a future free from cancer in all its forms. Now therefore, be it proclaimed, I, Robert J. Murray III, Mayor of the Town of Waxaw, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim October 2024 as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Union County and urge all citizens to support this observance. I further urge our citizens to increase their awareness, education, and importance of early detection of breast cancer, which deeply affects a large number of families in our state each year, and to dedicate themselves to prevention, detection, and treatment of breast cancer. Duly adopted on this 24th day of September, 2024.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to, well, it's just a proclamation, just... Thank you very much, everyone. I think those are really worthy and thank you all. Uh, next up, we have a presentation now from Ms. Michelle Norris, Morris. And Ms. Kathy Heitel. Oh, Reverend Benson, I hear you're filling in for Ms. Kathy.
He is, yes, thank you.
Is this on?
We got you.
Greetings, Mr. Mayor. Greetings, Madam, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, Commissioners, Staff, and to the citizens of the great town of Waxaw. Uh, I am joined here today by Ms. Michelle Morris and Mr. Colin Moore. And we're going to, uh, give a presentation on the 2024, uh, bond that we hope the citizens of Waxaw will join us in support. These first few slides you will see is just some of the history of the success of bonds. To date, we've had more than 30 new schools, construction, and renovation projects that we have, uh, been able to, uh, do because of the kindness of the citizens voting for these, uh, bonds. Just a little history. We are here today because of our current bond that will be voted on, uh, November 5th and of course it will start in early voting. We have two projects that are being tagged this year. Uh, we have East Union Middle School, which is, uh, slated, uh, to be a replacement school project, uh, at an estimated, uh, cost of $27,567,447. Uh, that is, um, a great project because it will take East Union Middle School from off Highway 74 in Marshville, which has the children that travel that route going over that four-lane road is, is quite dangerous, and move it to the campus of the high school where the kindness of you all a few years ago passed that bond and the new Forest Hills High School is upcoming and it is some type of structure. And the old Forest Hills High School will then become refurbished and become the new East Union Middle School. And we believe that that's going to allow those two, uh, uh, schools to utilize all of that campus and of course minimize a safer environment. Uh, for your neighborhood and your community, this year's bond also has Parkwood High School, which a lot of the citizens in Waxaw attend. And this is a pre-construction project, just getting the ball, uh, rolling. It's amazing how much things cost just to put it down on paper. And this cost is an estimated $10,705,804. And that's going to allow all of the pre-construction, uh, Mr. Moore can go into even greater detail at the end of the presentation if you have any questions concerning, uh, that. Why do we need this bond? This bond is needed, these two particular, uh, properties, they're aging from the 50s and the 60s. They're aging properties and it will, uh, enhance, uh, UCPS, uh, to provide such great opportunities to get newer, uh, properties for our, uh, student body. Uh, UCPS has more than 1.1 billion in facilities needs. These are just two of the many needs that will be satisfied with this, uh, bond. And again, uh, some more pictures of the projected, uh, this, and I'm really excited because I'm looking forward to seeing Forest Hills High School, uh, the, the current Forest Hills High School transformed because that is a very old facility. If you've ever been inside Forest Hills High School, thank you, Madam Pro Tem, she's shaking her head. A quick story, my son wrestles and we had a wrestling match at Forest Hills High School when we came here in 1998. And when I went into that school, I thought I had went back in time. I was so glad that they got that new gym, even though they are arch rivals, uh, they needed it. And so, uh, this new addition and the refurbishing of that school is really going to take that existing property and just cause a great, uh, opportunity for the citizens of Wingate and Marshville area. And again, just some more slides and pictures of projected of how it's going, uh, to look. The benefit of the Parkwood project is it will also, um, allow the current Parkwood High School to be refurbished and, uh, the middle school moved up there in the future. But right now, we're just looking at the pre-construction cost of that, uh, project. Again, some more pictures. Long-term planning, we have some major, uh, proposed projects, including the ones that you can see on, uh, the screen. And as these bonds get rolled out, the citizens really have an opportunity to, to visualize it and I would encourage, um, folks to visit East, uh, East Elementary School and the new Forest Hills High School. If you can drive by there and see the construction of these two on the, uh, eastern side of our county, it's really going to impact, uh, the attitude and just, just the enthusiasm of these projects. And these are some more that's in the pipeline. Some of the frequently, uh, funds to be spent, uh, is proposed, uh, the bond is used only for costs associated with these projects. This is not going to be pork barrel. We're not going to try to get this money and, uh, go on vacation somewhere. This is for the construction projects and those things associated with the construction project and I can say it soundly because you can look to see what we've done in past years with prior bonds. Uh, Mr. Colin Moore's, uh, team, they have become experts in making sure that what we say we're gonna do, we get it done. Some other frequently asked questions is what is a bond? And we, I believe we covered that the last time we was here a few years ago. It's just a way of, of financing these projects at a lesser burden on the taxpayers. And again, why do we need to renovate our schools? I believe I've shared a little bit of that, uh, in some prior, uh, slides, but just to hit the question again, uh, these schools, they're old and they need, uh, help. And whether we rebuild, refurbish, it all will enhance, uh, you all. When people look in California and Texas and Nebraska and they want to come to North Carolina and they see what Union County is doing and how forward-thinking we are and what we're doing to help, uh, with the, uh, school system, that's why they move here. And so you all, the citizens of Waxaw have benefited, uh, from that. Uh, how were the projects selected? Uh, a few years ago, uh, a couple of boards was put together to look at long-range planning. And these are just the next ones on the list. We believe that we've got them in such a way, uh, that the most needed is at the top, but, uh, we, we want to make sure that all of them get looked at and some got to get chosen and some got to wait. Uh, what happens if the bond doesn't pass? If it doesn't pass, then, uh, our finance team is going to have to come up with some creative ways of trying to find the dollars because it has to be done. Whether it's the bond or it has to be done. The, these places need new, built, or refurbished, uh, projects. Uh, if the bond passes on November 5th, when will the projects begin? We really believe that, uh, come September of 2025, the ball will get rolling. Again, go back to when we were here just a few years ago and look at what has happened with East and with Forest Hills. We move, uh, quickly and again, uh, Mr. Moore can address that in greater, uh, detail if you have some technical questions. Uh, I've already, what are the plans for East Union Middle School? No decision has been made at that, at this time. My child's school is not on this bond, why should I be concerned about these projects? Well, I tell you, uh, a lot of this children were not on the last bond, but when you look at the results of what has happened, then you can rest assured that your day is coming. Uh, we're doing what we said that we're going to do and your day is coming. But you all here in, uh, in Waxaw, this is personal because Parkwood is included and I know you have to be happy about that. What is the estimated tax, uh, increase? Just to cut to the chase, that, down, that example there, for every $100,000 in value, it's going to be an approximate $8. $8. Uh, and of course, I've addressed when, uh, is the bond going to be voted on, but there's some additional information and I'm sure you'll put that on there. We've already had some community meetings and we'll be having more. Uh, one that is, uh, in you all's area, uh, coming up is October the 3rd at Parkwood High School and, uh, you'll be able to, uh, come and, uh, see more, get more questions answered in a more broad, uh, format, uh, than today. So again, we want to encourage everyone, uh, to vote. Early voting starts October 17th and we definitely want you to, between then and November 5th, please, um, work with us, do as you've done before and vote for these bonds because the town of Waxaw will be the beneficiary this go round in terms of Parkwood High School. And we will see you at the poll. We stand ready for your questions.
Any questions from the board? Oh, wow. Okay, it's all me then. I got a couple. I'm not going to be grilling anybody. I'm just trying to ask questions in general. Uh, I guess you could say for my own selfish reasons, but I think if I have these questions, I'm sure others as well share these questions. Um, so just for historical notice, I know Parkwood dates back way back when. How long has it been since Parkwood's been renovated or really touched in any way?
Outside of the new, uh, gym and the refurbishing of the field, Mr. Moore, you got some additional data to connect us?
Must have read your mind, Mr. Mayor, I had that, I actually had that information available. So, um, we did a...
It must be a common question. It must be a common question.
So in, uh, 1999, we did a classroom addition and did some administrative and auditory renovations. Uh, we did a dining addition in 2002. The most recent thing was a, um, a media center renovation in 2009 and a gym addition in 2006. Now, as part of this design evaluation, we will evaluate if we can reuse some of these facilities. We will be using many of the athletic facilities, football field, baseball field, uh, and potentially the gym because it's, it's only 15, 20 years old.
Okay. And then what about capacity? Do these alter or increase the capacity of the school overall?
They do. So currently, there are about, about a thousand kids at, at Parkwood High School. The capacity there is 1190, 1190 something in that range. We originally designed for 1,200, but with the, with the added, uh, projections of enrollment over the next 10 years, we are, um, we are proposing an 1,800-student capacity facility.
Okay. That's outstanding. Um, and then you mentioned, I think this is important for folks to understand as well. You mentioned if this bond doesn't pass, you got to scrape up money from someone somewhere. Is, what is the likelihood of any project of this scope occurring if this bond does not pass?
It's, it's like I've said repeatedly at these, at these presentations, we're, we're not voting on whether or not we build a school. We've identified, UCPS, uh, the Board of Education staff have identified these projects as the most needed. We're, we're not voting on whether they need to be done or not, we're voting on how they are paid for. Bonds are the most economical way to finance school construction. Bonds are the most economical way to finance school construction.
As opposed to pulling it from, say, the school's general fund?
From capital or general fund or, or some kind of funding from the county.
Which goes to salaries and general equipment and things school kids need.
Yeah, so, and so those kinda things, the salaries, the equipment thing, the, the things that we would need to sustain the school would be factored in as we prepare our budgets for those school years.
Yep.
Um, but yeah, the bond is the most, most economical way to finance school construction.
Okay.
So we would have to sit down with the county commissioners and try to figure out what are the other alternatives if the bond doesn't pass.
So the bond allows you to do the construction work and capitalize on renovations without actually having to tap into general funds and monies that are basically being spent for the operation of the school itself?
That's correct.
Okay, that's great. Um, and then the other question I had, it's eight dollars per hundred thousand. What's the term of the bond? Is it a twenty or a thirty-year bond or?
I, I, I don't know definitively, but typically that's a twenty, it's a twenty-year bond.
Only twenty, okay.
It's, it's typically a twenty-year, twenty-year bond.
Okay. Thank you. Those were my questions. Last chance, anyone else? All right. Go ahead, I'll, I'll, I'll read the question. What's your question? Shout it out. So that'll be eight dollars you pay per year per one hundred thousand dollars of value of your house. So if you have a three hundred thousand dollar home or a home valued at three hundred thousand, you're gonna pay twenty-four dollars a year for the next twenty years. Correct?
Mr. Mayor, if I could just clarify, I think, I think it was, it's, it's more, it's, your, your taxes would increase by eight dollars per hundred thousand dollar value. I'm not exactly sure what that tax value is now, it depends, um, but you're-
Yes, it's an additional-
It's an addition to what you're currently paying.
Yes, sorry.
Yes.
It's an additional eight dollars.
Eight dollars per hundred thousand.
Thank you. That's, that's much clearer, thank you. Alrighty.
Still, well, thank you for one more quick question. Um, the, the Parkwood High is a pre-construction project, which absolutely, absolutely needed. Um, would, would the county expect an, an, a follow-up bond for the actual development of that project?
Yes.
And then what would be that, you're in your guesstimate, that timeline where Parkwood would actually see the, um, physical, um, benefits of, of your work?
Yeah, yes, that's, that's a great question. So, so we, we have been directed by the county commissioners that they would like to look at a bond every two years. So instead of trying to lump ten years' worth of projects in a bond in twenty twenty-two, it was decided, let's look at a bond in twenty twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-eight. So this project allows us to do the design and the pre-construction. It's, it's not just putting lines on a piece of paper. It's, that is expensive, but there's also soil, um, evaluations, surveys, traffic impact analysis, permits, uh, a lot of pre-construction costs that go into that ten million dollars in addition to just, to just drawing lines on a paper. And then our intention would be, that's probably a twelve-to-eighteen-month process. So our intentions would be to, to put the construction on the twenty twenty-six bond.
Great information, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Madam Pro Tem, and thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Uh, let's see here, Mac got canceled. We have no public hearings tonight. And old business, uh, Ms. Barbie Bruce. Adoption of proposed amendments. Uh, we have, it looks like Rule Thirty-four is the existing amendment. And then Appendix C. Guess we'll have to-
Thank you, board. Uh, tonight, we are going to look at the possible amendments to your rules of procedure. As you know, it's always a good idea to, uh, review them, um, on an annual basis to ensure that your practices as a board are current and meet with the North Carolina state statutes and the laws. Um, as you know, these rules of procedure were, um, drafted using the, um, Fleming Bell Suggested Rules for Procedure for City Councils, the third edition, and Trey Allen's Suggested Rules of Procedure for City Councils, which was the fourth edition. It also incorporates general parliamentary practices and also applicable North Carolina, uh, state laws. They are modified using the, um, Roberts Rules of Order, the newly revised. Um, generally, the, uh, Roberts Rules are, uh, primarily for big boards and are sometimes not always appropriate for smaller boards such as yours. So the proposed amendments are for clarity based on your current practices aboard as well as some amendments. Um, and due to the removal of Rule Thirteen, um, we'll look at those and possibly re, uh, amend these. But for right now, if these are adopted, then these will supersede all prior, uh, rules of procedure that you have on the books. So right now, we're looking at Rule Thirty-four and that talks about your committees and your boards. And one of the things that was done on September the twenty-eighth of twenty-one, the board had added a sentence that, um, addresses the impropriety for having spouses, immediate families, um, be members of the board while a board member was in office. So what, what was happened here is we, I incorporated this sentence that was adopted by the board back in twenty-one. And this merely just allows that, um, incorporation to occur. Now, it, um, the, our attorney has suggested a few amendments to this, uh, this sentence that, um, could be a possible, possibility for you to do. But for right now, if you choose to, um, go with those suggested amendments, um, we can incorporate that or we leave the sentence as it is. But for right now, the sentence is, uh, incorporated as it was originally adopted in twenty-one. So the next is to add an Appendix C, which just adds a sheet where it is listed as all of your amendments that you see on one page instead of having them attached to the rules of procedure as, um, as a separate sheet. So this would be just a record-keeping mechanism to, shows all of those amendments and what was, what was added and amended during that time. As well as clearing up any formatting such as the, uh, current logo, fonts, uh, alignment and spacing to the rules of procedure. And if you choose to adopt the proposed amendments, then this would be the motion that you use.
Any questions from the board?
I just have a question on Rule Thirty-four. If you can go back to that on the screen, please. Okay, with this rule, um, town attorney has reject, uh, suggested additional information be added or changed in this? Uh, I'm sorry, that was not my recommendation to make changes tonight.
Okay, so-
This has already been adopted.
I understand.
All that they're doing, all that's been done tonight is adding it to the rules.
All right, so yours not on for this right now. Okay, just wanted to be clear.
Perhaps something for the retreat agenda.
Perhaps so.
Okay, we need a motion.
Sorry. And the motion is only gonna include Rule Thirty-four and Appendix C.
All right.
Right. Can I get the motion, Brandy? Barbie, sorry. Hi, Brandy.
Right, I need a motion to adopt the proposed amendment Rule Thirty-four and add Appendix C to the Board of Commissioners' rules of procedures as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the ayes have it. The rule is now amended. Thank you. Next up, in new business, I'd like to invite Ms. Janet Perino. We have a Historic Preservation Fund Grant Award. These are always exciting.
Yes, um, so I am Janet Perino. I am a planner for the town of Waxaw and also serve as the, um, staff liaison to the Historic Preservation Commission. And I'm here tonight to talk about the Historic Preservation Grant. So the, uh, Historic Preservation Fund, uh, it was established by the National Park Service to provide financial assistance to carry out activities related to preservation. Each year, the National Park Service awards grants to our State Historic Preservation Office. And they are legally required to pass through at least ten percent of those funds to certified local governments in the forms of a grant. So I am here pleased to announce tonight that the town of Waxaw has been awarded a grant in the amount of twenty-four thousand dollars to help fund the Waxaw African-American History Project. That project will be community-driven. We'll start with oral histories, um, which hopefully will be, lead us to identify people and places that are important to our African-American community. Uh, what, hopefully that will lead to architectural surveys and maybe the addition of some more buildings to our national register. We will, uh, hold at least one African-American history event where the community will be invited to bring photos and documents, to have them scanned and preserved, uh, and any artifacts that can be documented. And we will, um, share that information with the state archives. So my requested action this evening is just a motion to adopt a budget amendment allowing the town manager and finance director to accept the grant award.
Thank you. Could I get a motion to adopt Budget Amendment Ordinance, ORD, twenty twenty-four, zero two-three?
Motion to adopt ordance two zero two four zero two-three, establishing, establishing a special revenue fund and authorize the town manager and finance director to accept the grant award in the amount of twenty-four thousand to help fund the Waxaw African-American History Project as presented.
All in favor?
Aye.
This motion has been passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Ms. Rosa said that she will participate.
Excellent. Next up, we have the approval, um, of the Building Exterior Improvements Grant Request.
Yes, uh, so this is a petition by the property owner Laura Edwards for work on the porch roof of her property located at three thirty-three North Broad Street. This house was built circa eighteen ninety-seven by Charles Massey. Was eventually purchased by the Collins family, um, William Henry Collins, who was the owner and operator of the W.H. Collins and Sons Stable, you know, also known as the Mule Barn. The house is listed on the National Register of Historic Places as a contributing structure. Architecturally significant, um, because of the striking two-story asymmetrical house, which features an ornate wraparound porch and the interior displays a center hall plan. There was a previous owner who, um, didn't care for the house as much as our current owner does. They wrapped it in vinyl siding, they replaced windows with vinyl windows, um, did some other renovations that, uh, were not historically accurate. So the Edwards family bought this house two years ago. Uh, they were unaware of our facade grant program until just recently. So in the past two years, they removed the vinyl siding and found the original cedar weatherboard siding underneath. They had that restored. They've replaced some of the vinyl windows. They've added copper gutters, did extensive foundation work, uh, including jacking up the sagging corners and adding piers to the foundation. And they restored a closed-in back porch. Right now, their work that they're asking to do is just to repair a roof over their front porch. And these pictures aren't that great because, uh, they were taken through the window looking out over the porch. Uh, but, uh, you can see the waves in the roofing and there's some tears, uh, so water is getting through there. They have two contractor quotes, uh, sixty-one hundred dollars and the second one is sixty-six fifty. If you approve this tonight, uh, we would award a grant in the amount of not to exceed thirty-three twenty-five and that would leave forty-five thousand dollars roughly in the fund balance. The Historic Preservation Commission considered this grant at their September twelfth meeting and unanimously recommended approval. So the requested action this evening is a motion to approve the grant.
Questions? No? Could I get a motion to approve BEIG zero zero five, twenty twenty-four, as presented? Up to fifty percent of the actual cost of work not to exceed thirty-three twenty-five.
So moved, you read the whole motion.
All in favor, once I get started. All opposed. The motion passes, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Ms. Lisa, subdivision plat petition for Artisan at Prescott.
Thank you, mayor and board. I'm here tonight to present petition subdivision zero one five four seven three, twenty twenty-four. It's a request by the applicant Eric Candy with Wide Waters. It's for a by-right preliminary subdivision plat. This is on approximately sixty-six point nine-two acres. The proposed subdivision ca- contains a hundred and sixty-nine single-family attached units and overall density of two-point-five units per acre. The project site is outlined in blue. Um, you can see it runs along Prescott Glen Parkway. You have NC sixteen running north and south. The existing Prescott subdivision is to the west. And then the Union County wastewater, uh, treatment plant is to the north. The property is currently zoned NC in brown and R four, the orangish-brown. Here is a snapshot of the preliminary plat. We'll start with the, uh, northeast corner. Uh, there's about fifty-three attached units, um, that will have access off of Kemble Street. Uh, that's next to the Bed and Bark and the Wendy's, which will have a right-in, right-out on Providence Road. We have about twenty-six, um, homes proposed along Prescott Glen Parkway. Uh, we didn't want driveway access along this, so they will be alley-fed in the back. And then there's eighty-eight, um, attached units that'll be located off this new roundabout, which will connect Pine Oak to Prescott Glen Parkway, eventually to the signal at NC sixteen. All lots meet the minimum dimensional requirements and setbacks. Waxaw's traffic consultant, Kimberly Horn, has prepared a TIA. This one has actually been approved and has started. Um, I'll orient you to, uh, take a look at the three stars. So the bottom left, this is the intersection of Pine Oak and Waxaw Marvin. They are required to, uh, signalize this intersection and, uh, make the required, uh, turn lane improvements that go along with that signalization. This star up here along, uh, Prescott Glen will connect Pine Oak to Prescott Glen Parkway, uh, with a, a roundabout. Um, these folks will now have the ability to, um, use Prescott Glen Parkway to be able to take a left out at the, uh, signal. And then the third major improvement is, um, turning Pine Oak at NC sixteen into a right-in, right-out. We know how dangerous that intersection is. Other improvements have been included in your packet. And Brady Finkley is here with Kimberly Horn tonight if you guys have any other tra- traffic questions. As far as parkland recreation and open space, twenty percent of the site is required to be, um, in open space. Fifteen percent of that has to be active. Uh, that is typically done through gardens and trails, parks and plazas. It's done at the construction plan, um, timeline. Um, in addition to that, they are required a land dedication or fee in lieu. It's one thirty-fifth of an acre times the number of units. So if you multiply that by a hundred and sixty-nine units, you get about four-point-eight acres. Staff recommends, um, that we, uh, accredit twenty feet of the trail easement for Twelve Mile Creek Greenway, um, to go towards that fee in lieu, which will leave about three-point-two-four acres, uh, of fee in lieu. So it's a combination of parkland or greenway, a dedication and fee in lieu. The current tax value for, uh, this area is close to a hundred thousand per acre. So multiply that by- So multiply that by 3.24, and you'll have that calculation. That fee is due at the time of final plat. Again, this is the preliminary plat stage. This is the general layout of the subdivision. It still has to go through the construction plan review and final plat. The planning board reviewed the plat on August 17th. They unanimously recommended approval. They brought up some concerns. It's more of some staff items to look at during the construction plan review. Make sure there's speed tables where applicable. Look for opportunities for trailhead along the Carolina Thread Trail and parking for the public. They're concerned about Pine Oak with the flooding issues. So when we're designing that roundabout, to make sure that that water is detained to help with that flooding issue. And then for the applicant to look at setbacks and buffers near the ponds. With that, staff recommends approval, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Eric Candy with Wide Waters is also here. If you have any questions for him.
Any questions from the board? Just my question was parking at the trailhead. Has that been resolved? I know that came up in the planning board meeting as well, and you mentioned it here in the presentation. Have we figured out where or if we can accommodate that? Or are we thinking of maybe diverting attention to folks maybe in the retail area to park there around the Lowe's Food or?
Yep. So we had discussed a possible area. There's some on-street parking ability. Up here, you've got the Bed &amp; Bark and the Wendy's. There's some extra parking there. It's just being able to connect, to make sure we have the connection for the Carolina Thread Trail that runs east-west. From here to get to the trail or from, you know, the commercial center to be able to get to that trail is something we'll have to work with the applicant with through construction plans. We just don't have the details of that trail location.
And that, but that's something we're forward, we're looking into getting that?
Yes, sir.
And then the land for the trail. This is all part of the Carolina Thread Trail that we're looking at on the northern side of this property?
Correct. So the Carolina Thread Trail, for those in the audience, it's an east-west trail that goes from the South Carolina State Line all the way to the Lawson subdivision. So this is a big portion of that trail. They're also dedicating a north-south section that's not being accredited to that parkland fee in lieu. This is in addition to their land donation up here. We're gonna have that connection to the, where the old Prescott Bridge would have been to that subdivision.
Any other questions? Last chance. Okay. What's the motion? Can you click back to the motion real quick? And there we go. Could I get a motion to approve petition 051367-2024 as presented? Yeah, this is, this is, yeah. So there's questions about the traffic and concerns about this being added, and folks that may not know about this already. This was a project that was approved a couple of years ago, more than a year ago?
The zoning was.
The zoning.
Correct. Yep. It's part of a bigger commercial, the Lowe's Foods Commercial Center. It's by right. It's on the website, and I'd be happy to sit with whoever and go through some of the traffic mitigations and get some of this stuff online. We'll get it, make sure it's all up to date and posted on there.
And just to highlight, we've been working on some of these traffic mitigations actually for more than a year now with the land acquisition to account for the roundabout, for instance, that's going on Prescott Glen. And then the addition of the light, which will be done. So we're, we're getting some mitigations. It's gonna be on Providence Road, so the folks in this residence, as well as the people using those businesses, the Lowe's Foods in particular, as well as the residents in this neighborhood, will have a light to get them on and off of 16. So it won't be a right-in, right-out. There will, there will be a light. So. This doesn't touch Waxahaw Marvin Road. Well, there is that mitigation on Waxahaw Marvin, and it's turning what is now a complicated Y. It's also putting a light there. So there are two really good traffic mitigations coming out of this development. And again, the development is a by right, and it's been approved a few years ago. Thank you. Thank you. Lisa can walk you through the website if you want to learn more about what's going on. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Sorry, sir. Go ahead. I mean, we gotta move on, but one last question? This was approved a while ago. Exactly, exactly. Not, we can't unapprove something, and that's the big thing. That's where municipalities get in trouble, is when they try to stop things that have already been approved, or they try to stop things that are by right. So right now, this is a by right development, and this plat puts it at about two units per acre. This particular development, it's, it's really similar to what you would call almost a conservation subdivision in that there is a large swath of open undeveloped land. While a lot of that is in floodplain, it still has a lot of open land adjacent to a lot of these homes, so. Correct. And eventually, it will be widened. It will be widened. But thank you. We share your concern, sir. Thank you. Okay, so did we approve this or not? Can I get a motion to approve petition 051367-2024 as presented?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? And the motion carries. Thank you very much. Next up, we have consideration for the appointments of the advisory boards. Ms. Barbie Bruce and Mr. Michael Avola. Come on down.
Thank you, Board. Michael and I are gonna piggyback on this presentation. I'll go through the, the initial part of the presentation, and then he'll introduce the potential, the recommended candidates and that process. As you know, the OAB was established by the Board of Commissioners to ensure, promote, and advise and assist the town with facilitating and making impartial recommendations for candidates' appointments to the volunteer boards and commissions. And the selection process that, that is, that we use on the OAB is, the OAB reviews all the advisory board applications. They conduct all the interviews with applicants. They rank them using a five-to-one ranking scale, which means five is, is the top pick, one is their lowest pick. And then they look at their ranking sheet, and then they recommend the slate of candidates. So the timeline that we used is their initial meeting was on August the 12th. That's when they received all the materials that they need to conduct the interviews and do their ranking. They were, the interviews were completed on September the 5th. And September the 9th, we had our final meeting where we went through each applicant, looked at the ranking sheet, and the board chose their recommended slate of candidates. On the 10th, the Board of Commissioners received all copies of all the applications, and tonight, we're here to present that slate of candidates for appointment and reappointment. And then the 25th, once those appointments are made, the clerk's office will notify those that were appointed and those that were not considered.
Good evening. My name is Michael Avola, Chair of the OAB and the PCR Board. So the summary of the vacancies for the respective advisory boards and committees. We had one member seat vacant for the ABC Board, three for the Historic Preservation Commission, one for the Public Art Committee, three for the Planning Board, Board of Adjustments, and three for the Parks, Culture, and Recreation Advisory Board. The recommended slate of candidates, which again, Ms. Barbie had outlined the process in which we interviewed and went through vetting the applicants. And please excuse me if I mispronounce any of these names. For the ABC Board, we recommend Patrick McCullough. For the Historic Preservation Commission, we recommend John Mullen, Vivy Miller, Terry Settle. For the Public Art Committee, we recommend Jennings Witt. For the Parks, Culture, and Recreation Advisory Board, we recommend Mark Haggerty, Cela Vlatso, Avril Arndis. And for the Planning Board, Board of Adjustments, we recommend Daniel Ferris, Dipa Limay, and Christine Winward. And we have a few recommended actions for you tonight, if you have any questions.
Any questions?
Board, let me remind you that you can take the slate as one motion, as you see at the top, or you do have in your packet where you can make the individual motions based off of your motion sheet.
Where is that?
The motion sheet?
I think you, I think it's right there in your, right on top of your matrix sheet.
It's this guy, right?
No. It should be a list of.
This one?
Yes.
Oh. Is that?
Yes, that's, that's the individual motion sheet. Each motion's there. It should be behind your recommended slate.
I've got it, yeah. You don't have it?
So we'll start this off quickly and easy. Can I get a motion to approve the slate of candidates for appointment and reappointment to serve on the?
Can I just ask a question before we do the motion?
I'm sorry.
Questions?
Question. For the interview process, how were the candidates interviewed? Were they interviewed by the Board, the OAB as a whole, or were they interviewed by one person, two people? How many people did the interview?
So each respective representative from each of the advisory boards that make up the OAB interviewed with the staff liaison for their boards. And then when we came together at that final meeting, made our recommendations to the OAB as a whole.
So.
Go ahead. I have another question.
Town clerk, previously, how were the interviews held with regard to appointment, either with the OAB or with members to the individual committees? We use the same process with the OAB. The, the chair from that board takes their applications, and they make, schedule their interviews. They can interview within. No, previously, prior to that, how did the Board of Commissioners or was there, it was a round robin or some type of situation that was held with interview process where all the candidates came in and were interviewed within the same period on the same room by members? That may be true, but that was before my time.
Oh, that was.
I do know that when we, when you reestablished the planning board after you had, I guess.
Suspended?
Suspended that, that board to incorporate the, their, the, the BOAs duties with the planning board. You at that time had a round, round robin interview with all of those candidates. But as far as doing the round robin, I do, I have heard things that you did do that, but you didn't do it while I was here.
Fair approach, Jim. I, I have vague memories of that, a little bit of recollection, I think, from my early days here. But I, I believe that there was two, maybe three commissioners, I think, two commissioners that led that process. What I, I'm not sure if that's accurate. I'm really not, but it just, that's what comes to mind.
Well, when the OAB was first established, we had appointed board members. Then we did away with the OAB. And then that's when we did the round robins. And the commissioners all interviewed everybody and then had a special meeting where we discussed who we appoint, we're gonna appoint. Then I think it was during COVID, we went back to, it was just two commissioners and the town clerk interviewing. And then just this last time, then, we decided to do the chair or vice chair as OAB members. But I think we do need to discuss whether or not this process is working.
What's the problem with the process?
Well, I think that it opens up to bias.
I mean, we're at a point where we're discussing a process that we're at the end of.
Okay.
So I think we're at a point where we either proceed with a motion to approve the slate of candidates or we go to the individual one by one. So if nobody's gonna second a motion to approve the slate of candidates, then we go to the one by one. So with that in mind, can I get a motion to approve the slate of candidates for appointment and reappointment to serve on the 2024 Waxahaw Advisory Boards and Commissions? So, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I have a question.
I have a motion on the floor.
Then, then no.
All opposed. Okay, so we have a 3-2 vote. The motion does not carry.
When you say to do individually, one by one or board by board?
My understanding is it's person by person.
Is it person by person, or can you do board by board? You can do board by board, but the individual motion sheet is for the person of that board. So are we reading the individual person and the board? Yes, for example, with the ABC Board, you would make a motion to appoint Patrick to that board for a three-year term ending in November the 30th of 2017.
And you would do that for each one?
For each one of those, yes.
Okay, just wanted to be clear. That was just my question.
And if someone is not selected from the list?
If you choose not to make a motion on that person, then we need to know if we need to set up interviews for that or if the board wishes to do a different process for those appointments.
So in other words, we're selecting individuals and then not selecting individuals? So in other words, we either take the person on this list, or we don't take the person on the list. And if we don't take the person on the list, we're going back to the interview process. Is that correct?
Correct. You have the right not to accept that appointment.
Correct, of an individual on this list.
Correct.
And then it goes back to you?
Then it goes, sounds like it goes back to the board.
It would go back to the OAB, or the board could wish to, to do their own interviews of those candidates, and we, and the clerk's office can set those up. I thought that's what we were doing this past two weeks.
Well, everybody didn't do that. I didn't know they did that, so.
I have a question. Is there somebody in particular we're not looking to approve?
I'm just trying.
I'm just asking. It seems to be some confusion, so everybody, we appointed this board. They interviewed, we put faith in them as qualified people, as chairs and vice chairs of their boards. I'm just asking, is there a particular candidate we're not interested in, or somebody is not interested in?
No, I, I just think that there needs to be, there was clarification that needed to be asked. And it's not identifying or pointing out an individual person, or maybe it's just a group of people. Or maybe commissioners on this board have spoken to people or even done their own homework on individuals, which was different than maybe what the sheet has shown. So they, then with that, then you have the right to question or ask, or then ask to have the interview process again?
Right, but we did discuss that at the end of the last meeting. I believe Commissioner Westling brought that up, that we could interview. So I believe we all had an opportunity to do that if we felt. So, I believe we all had an opportunity to do that if we felt the need to. So, I don't know that we need to continue it again.
If nobody had that, if no one did that, or if someone still has questions, then they still have the right to do that again.
Who is this somebody?
Why?
We're, we're gonna do the, we're gonna go through...
Let's, let's then move, let's then go and make the individual motions. And again, the motion is to approve the person named, or to not approve the person named.
Okay.
So, regarding the ABC Board, I make an emotion to appoint...
No, no. You gotta ask for the motion, you don't make the motion.
You're, you're correct, thank you. For the ABC Board, can I get a motion to appoint Patrick McCullough to the ABC Board for a three-year term beginning October 1st, 2024, ending September 30th, 2027?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Patrick McCullough is now appointed to the ABC Board. Can I get a motion to appoint John Mullen to the Historic Preservation Commission for a three-year term beginning October 1st, 2024, to ending September 30th, 2027?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to appoint Vivy Miller to the Historic Preservation Committee.
For a three-year term beginning October 1st, 2024, ending September 30th, 2027?
Correct.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to reappoint Terry Settle to the HPC for a three-year term beginning October 1st, 2024, and ending September 30th, 2027?
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Can I get a motion to reappoint Mark Haggerty to the Parks, uh, what is it, Parks Cultural and Recreational Advisory Board for a three-year term beginning October 1st, 2024, ending September 30th, 2027?
Wait, did we do Jennings?
We're on Mark Haggerty.
We're on Mark Haggerty.
We just did Terry Settle, right?
We did Terry Settle, yeah. They need to cut.
We're on Mark Haggerty.
I don't have a Terry Jennings on this list.
It's on the sheet. This sheet.
PAC.
This sheet.
Okay.
So moved.
Uh, so moved. All in favor of appointing Mark Haggerty?
Aye.
All opposed? Mark Haggerty. Can I get a motion to reappoint Silla Vlacho to the Parks Cultural and Recreational Advisory Board for a three-year term beginning October 1st, 2024, ending September 30th, 2027? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Can I get a motion to appoint Avril Arrendis to the Parks Cultural and Recreational Advisory Board for a three-year term beginning October 1st, 2024, ending September 30th, 2027?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you very much. Public Arts Committee, can I get a motion to appoint Jennings Witt to the Public Arts Committee for a two-year term beginning October 1st, 2024, and ending September 30th, 2026?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Planning Board and Board of Adjustments, can I get a motion to reappoint Daniel Ferris to the Planning Board, Board of Adjustments for a three-year term beginning October 1st, 2024, ending September 30th, 2027?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Why are you guys not...
Could I get a motion to reappoint Deepa Leme to the Planning Board, Board of Adjustments for a three-year term beginning October 1st, 2024, ending September 30th, 2027?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Can I get a motion to appoint Christine Winward to the Planning Board, Board of Adjustments alternate for a three-year term beginning October 1st, 2024, ending September 30th, 2027? Can I get a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Another three to two. And that's all of them, correct? Did I miss anybody?
No, that's all.
Thank you very much, Barbie. So, it looks as though we have two openings still for the Planning Board, Board of Adjustments, and that'll go back to the interview. Thank you very much. Next item on the list. Leadership Reports. Take it away, Jeff.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things this evening, and I am proud to announce that we have received another grant hot off the press. We received the, uh, what is known as the STRAP grant. We will receive eighty-five thousand, seven hundred and fourteen dollars for stream debris removal. This is provided to us from the Soil and Water Conservation Commission, uh, which is, administers this grant through the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. So, we are really excited about that. Now, eighty-five dollars doesn't really go a very long way, but it will help. And, uh, we have some targeted areas that we're looking at along Twelve Mile Creek that have extensive, uh, backed up debris, things of that sorts. Town Campus Update, we are very close, very close. Final inspections have started on Town Hall. They've done a lot of finaling out on the, uh, on the upstairs, the second floor of Town Hall. Fire Marshal was doing a lot of his, uh, final inspections today, so I'll hear how that went from what I, tomorrow, but what I hear, it went, uh, went pretty well today. Still waiting on the elevator inspection, that's one of the last things, and then we're at the very last strokes to receiving our water meter. We're still on construction water now, and so, uh, if all goes well, it's, it'll be a little bit fluid, but sometime in early to mid-October, we should, uh, be able to get our temporary, uh, certainty of occupancy to be there. There will still be a few outstanding things to do, but, uh, none of those would be any type of, uh, life or safety issues there, so we'll be able to occupy the, uh, the building at that time. So, the, uh, the Public Services, Parks and Recreation Operations Center is a little behind that by a few weeks, but they just finished, uh, some of the, uh, the ceiling work that they had, they had to do. And so, now that, uh, that's done, they can get that, uh, inspected over the next couple of days, and hopefully we'll move on to finishes, which should be quick for that building. Uh, not nearly as many finishes in that building as there was in, uh, Town Hall. So, uh, we're real close. Uh, if you come to current Town Hall now, you see hallways that are tough to maneuver through with, uh, moving boxes, things stacked up, uh, people are ready to move. So, that's all I have this evening.
That's good news. Thank you, Jeff. Uh, next up, Assistant Manager, Matt Hubert.
Good to see you again. Just a real brief update, um, on the downtown crosswalk additions at West North Main and North Church Street. All the hardscaping has been completed, um, for improving that, uh, all four sections of that crosswalk, those crossings, um, really to serve the additional pedestrian traffic that we're now getting due to the, uh, the opening of Jekyll and Hyde, and as well as response for more ADA spaces, um, that are gonna happen right there at North Church Street on both sides of that intersection. Uh, the, um, pavement markings still are yet to come, but our goal was to have that accomplished before Autumn Treasures, and we're well, uh, on our way to meeting that goal. Just wanted to, uh, update you on that. We were able to find the funds for that by not, uh, we didn't use contingency funds for resurfacing, and so we had that money already in the budget, and we're able to apply it in that, in that location. Any questions?
You think you'll get that finished before the rain comes this weekend, it looks like?
Well, I would hope so, or it's all gonna drizzle down and...
Float away.
Turn into art.
Exactly.
Thank you.
Good place for it under the mural. Alrighty, next up, we have Communications Director, Ian Redman.
Yeah, I'm not Jenny. I'm sure, uh, that's a disappointment in quality. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of the Board, thanks so much for, uh, allowing me to address you tonight on behalf of the communications team at Waxaw. Some of you may know me, I am the Strategy Director for Haven Creative. I've been supporting Waxaw and its communications for the past three years. As a reminder of who is on the communications team today in Waxaw, Jenny Buchholz is Communications Director and Public Information Officer. I'm supporting her as your Media Relations Specialist and in that Communications Manager function. You're also supported by two other Haven mavens, uh, Jordan Butler, who is Account Manager, handling the day-to-day marketing and communication requests from town staff, as well as supporting the town with social media and website updates. And then you also have a dedicated graphic designer, Gemma Pisano, who is, um, doing some really awesome work for the town that you've probably seen on social media and the website. Um, so, I know I've worked with some of you in the past, um, I back up Jenny on any media issues. If we ever had to initiate an emergency operations center, Jenny and I would be the ones on site, uh, performing the Public Information Officer duties. Um, so if you have a, uh, public emergency, which hopefully, we don't need one of those anytime soon, you'll probably hear a lot from me then. Um, just a quick update on the communications work that's been happening this summer. Uh, our team at Haven and the communications team in Waxaw conducted a strategic audit, uh, this summer, where we looked at internal and external communications, story and content themes from our marketing, as well as our overall marketing and communication goals, uh, looking back at 2023, 2024, and looking forward to this current fiscal year, '24, ' '25. Um, you see on the screen a brief timeline of this audit and what we've done, um, in the month since. We have established a number of goals for the 2024, 2025 year. I'm not gonna read all of them, uh, because there's a lot of them, but they broadly, um, center around community engagement, making sure that we're growing measurable marketing and engaging with town residents, business owners, and visitors, as well as solidifying internal brand consistency within the town. The branding was adopted in 2017, 2016, um, so it is a, a well-established brand, and there's just some maintenance work that needs to be done to ensure that, um, the branding maintains its integrity and continues to grow and evolve with the town of Waxaw. We did come up with some key recommendations from this internal audit, uh, namely was around how we communicate internally to, uh, strengthen internal and external communications within the town of Waxaw. So, we have created an internal staff communications committee to make sure that we are telling the story of the town of Waxaw, its government functions, and the people who are working to support, uh, residents, businesses, and visitors. We're also gonna look at those brand guidelines for the town, and just do a, a small refresh of the brand book, and make sure that all of that positioning, guidance, and design guidelines match what's currently in use today. Um, then also, we've had some other recommendations, uh, that we are just kind of reviewing currently with town leadership, such as continuing our storytelling around the volunteerism campaign Waxaw Works Together. So, what is this communications committee? It's eleven staff representatives from every department, including police, HR, Parks and Rec, Administration, and Public Works. We're really looking at storytelling opportunities, such as the story we did back in February, where we, um, commemorated former Commissioner Barnes, uh, as well as looking at ways that we can talk about town staff and representatives, um, to the town. We're also looking to simplify our communication support for all departments. As town staff grows, communication becomes important. We wanna make sure that, no matter who you are in the town of Waxaw government, you have the ability to get marketing and communication support relatively easily, and then also to improve brand experience. Um, we're meeting monthly, we had our inaugural meeting earlier this month, um, and once Town Hall opens, uh, we'll be having those meetings in person, um, where we'll be able to gather everyone together to do that, so we're excited for that. Um, as I mentioned, we're also looking at refreshing that brand book. Um, this is just adding in recently created sub-brands, so Parks and Recreation and Downtown Waxaw recently had, um, additions or clarifications to their brand guidelines. Um, we're also just looking at the overall design guidelines for the town to ensure that those are the most up-to-date, and making sure that town staff and representatives are clear on branded tone of voice for the town of Waxaw. Um, this is not changing existing elements like logo, seal, or our brand pillars, and this is a totally natural, um, and run-of-regular course of business for any thriving brand to make sure that we're updating the living branded guidelines that we're using in the town. So, um, I'm happy to answer any questions about this work or what we're working on in the future, but thank you all so much for your time.
Any questions from the Board?
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Planning and Inspections, Ms. Lisa Thompson.
Good evening, everyone. As I prepare to transition from my role as Planning Director, I wanted to take a moment to express my gratitude to this Board, my colleagues, and the entire community. Serving in this position allowed me to work alongside passionate individuals, committed to the growth and well-being of our town. I've cherished the opportunities to collaborate on projects that have shaped our community, and to engage with residents who care deeply about the future of this town. Together, we've achieved many accomplishments, including the requirements for, for Parkland dedication, improvements to the tree preservation standards, the incorporation of commercial components in the Neighborhood Center District, the Waxaw 2040 Comprehensive Plan, and the latest conservation, development, and design ordinance, all of which will enhance the future of Waxaw. I am particularly thankful for the support and guidance I've received from each one of you, the leadership team with Jeff and Matt, and from my team. I love Waxaw, it's a beautiful community. I look forward to seeing the continued progress and growth of the town. I thank you all for this opportunity, and it has truly been an honor to serve the town. That's all I have.
Thank you very much, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Police Chief Dex Wilson.
Good evening. So, I was appointed the Chief of Police July of last year. After being appointed as the Chief, I started looking at professional development of all of our officers. I met with them all, I looked at their history, I looked at what classes they've taken, and it seemed that we were doing a great job with lower-level officers. They were supplied classes for everything, and, not that they don't need it, but we also need to develop professionally our officers, that they're gonna take my spot one day, uh, take the Deputy Chief's spot one day. Uh, we didn't have that. So, as of January of this year through present, uh, I just wanted to cover a couple of the major accomplishments of our, uh, upper-level officers. Lieutenant Mike Feige and Sergeant Matt Watkins completed the FBI Command College. Lieutenant Mulligan and Detective Jason Rau completed the Police Chiefs Institute. Lieutenant Ryan Womack and Detective, uh, Jason Rau are now attending the North Carolina Justice Academy Leadership Institute, which is a three-month program, and, uh, is gonna be a pretty big accomplishment for them as well. Lieutenant Ryan Womack is currently attending the Police Chiefs Institute this week. Uh, officers and admin staff so far this year have attended over a hundred and forty-five continuing education classes just, just this year, the last nine months. So, major accomplishments all through the PD. I also wanted to cover, uh, community events that we attended this month. So, we attended the Senior Citizens Coffee with, uh, where Lieutenant Zilla and I spoke to them about safety, fraud, identity theft, and email scams, since they're mostly victimized with those, uh, type of criminal activities. Uh, Since Police Academy started on September 9th, and will run the next eleven weeks, graduation will be on November the 18th. Uh, we attended the Patriot Day Remembrance Ceremony on September 11th. Uh, upcoming, depending on weather, uh, our last national night out in open house got canceled due to a tropical storm. Guess what's coming now? It's just our luck. So, we're praying the rain stays away, we could have the national night out and, uh, open house, it'll be here at the Waxaw Police Department on October 1st, and that'll be from five until nine PM. Uh, on September 13th, we attended the 2024 Hometown Heroes Escort of Two Children to New Salem Elementary School to kick off their annual Hometown Heroes Road Tour. Uh, we provided a K-9 demonstration for the Joy Field Learning Club Homeschool Group. Uh, coming up, we are doing the Wax, we'll be participating in, uh, no shave again this year. So, every year from, uh, well, the past five, six years at least, we've done October through December, where officers don't have to shave, they donate fifty dollars apiece, minimum, and, uh, in order to, uh, participate. All of that money goes to Hometown Heroes. Last year, we donated over sixteen hundred dollars. So, this year, we've tried to include the rest of the departments in the town to try to raise more money toward this event. So, if you see officers with a little, little longer beards than normal, that's why. Any questions?
Thank you. Um, I've been seeing a lot of chatter and a lot of stories about, uh, home break-ins. Is there any updates you... Is there any updates you can give us or something you can let the community know in regards to the home break-ins that we've been seeing in Weddington and other places?
So we haven't seen any here. I don't know what groups they are in, in Weddington or Marvin or wherever those groups are coming from, uh, but we haven't seen any home break-ins here. A lot of times, crime will happen around us. Thank the Lord, that sometimes it feels like there's a force field over us, uh, where the criminals stop in Weddington or they'll stop in Marvin short of coming to Waxaw. Uh, we are extra patrolling the neighborhoods, especially during the early morning hours, uh, and through the night, so I think we should feel comfortable in our home, home homes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Thank you, Dex. Uh, Commissioners, any Commissioners have any comments?
Yes, I do. So I just wanna recap. On July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, the Waxaw B O C voted unanimously to appoint four volunteer board members to the Organization Advisory Board. The O A B votes candidates for all of the town's volunteer boards by conducting interviews, scoring applicants, and making impartial recommendations to the B O C. On September ninth, twenty twenty-four, after interviewing candidates for multiple vacancies on several boards, including the Planning Board, the O A B finalized the review and scored the candidates. The Planning Board has three upcoming vacancies. On a scale of one to five, the O A B scored the nine candidates as follows. Daniel Ferris, present Chair, five points, the most. Deepa Lemay, four points, she's an active member. And Christine Winward, an Army veteran and company commander with extensive project management experience who deployed to Iraq, also received four points. The other six candidates received between one and three points. The O A B recommended the top three scoring candidates. Now we have three Commissioners on this board who are trying to undermine the process and install a personal friend over the O A B's recommendations. An individual who while serving on the Waxaw B O C between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-three never once voted against a conditional rezoning application. A person who in twenty twenty-three's Waxaw election received only seventeen point nine six percent of the vote. An individual who in twenty twenty-four's Union County B O C primary received only eleven point nine seven percent of the vote from the citizens. Twice in ten months, citizens from Waxaw and Union County clearly indicate that this applicant's vision for the community did not align with theirs. As an electorate, they do not want her involvement in the planning and development process in any way, shape, or form. This fact alone should disqualify her as a candidate. There is simply no valid basis for installing a candidate to the Planning Board through the back door when the front gate was closed by both the electorate and the O A B. This type of conduct is everything people despise about government, and it has no place in Waxaw. Specifically, such action would raise valid questions in, in many people's minds about nepotism, political favors, and potential violations of the ethical duties to which each board member is subject. We as board members agree to abide by the B O C rules of procedure, which declare in part that the board will recognize and respect public interest and will represent the town in an ethical manner for both public and private matters. Further, our Code of Ethics clearly states that public officials should avoid impropriety in the exercise of their official duties. Their official actions should be above reproach. The Town Board will consider impropriety in terms of whether a reasonable person who was aware of all the relevant facts and circumstances surrounding the board member's actions would conclude that the action is inappropriate. In my opinion, reasonable people aware of the facts and circumstances already discussed will easily conclude that the appointment of Ann Simpson to the Planning Board is completely inappropriate, but sadly, the facts don't even end there.
Did we appoint Ann Simpson?
No.
She's speaking.
Okay.
She's speaking.
I'm speaking.
She's speaking.
Since being sworn in, I'm, is it, but sadly, the facts don't end there. Since being sworn in nine months ago, I've had lunch meetings with department heads and volunteer board members so that I can learn more about their roles and responsibilities. On May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, such a meeting took place between me, Commissioner Daunt, and two Planning Board members, one being Daniel Ferris. Soon after our meeting, Mr. Ferris received a text message from Commissioner Weslick containing surveillance photos of our lunch. One inside the restaurant and one outside the restaurant. No other context. Yes.
They were not surveillance photos.
I'm sorry.
They weren't taken without knowledge.
Any reasonable person will, would interpret Commissioner Weslick's actions as quite literally sending them a message in an attempt to intimidate. Precisely two days later, Commissioner Weslick also responded to a citizen on her Commissioner Facebook page citing her displeasure with the Planning Board's recent decision to recommend against a project, stating, and I quote, "I am not sure why all of a sudden the Planning Board is not working effectively. Obviously, this is something that needs to be addressed. I guess this is the way to address it." Taken together, Commissioner Weslick expressed displeasure with a Planning Board recommendation along with the contemporaneous message she sent to the Planning Board Chair, our tantamount to intimidation aimed at placing undue influence on the Planning Board, and demonstrate that exercising a vote on these current Planning Board appointments wreak of impropriety and violation of our Code of Ethics. Accordingly, I formally request that she recuse herself from the entire Planning Board recommendation process and vote. And if that ridiculous does not happen, I would ask, I would formally request that the town attorney or the town manager investigate whether this overall course of conduct formed alleged, huh, from alleged intimidation of the Planning Board to ultimate recom, uh, recommendation to appoint her friend and failed candidate to the Planning Board today, if it violates the Code of Ethics or any other applicable rule. And I do, would like to submit my comments, the photos, and the posts.
Okay, well, I'm going to go ahead and, and respond.
Any other comments from the board?
Yes. Okay, I don't know what you're talking about surveillance photos, and I don't know what you're talk, how you even know any conversation between me and Dan Ferris, 'cause I noticed that you didn't include any other context. And so the other thing I would like to mention is, I do not, I do not support Dan Ferris as a chair. No, I don't. I have been watching the Planning Board meetings for the past six months, and he has been not doing what his, his job is. He's been going into the weeds. No, he does. We, I've gotten multiple complaints from different people, which I will not mention because I do not wanna get them in trouble.
Like Ron Peppas?
No, not Ron Peppas, actually.
Commissioner speaking.
So I do not have confidence in Dan Ferris serving as Planning Board Chair. Now, I also do not, did not, we did not appoint Ann Simpson, so I don't know where your accusations are coming that we are appointing Ann Simpson. You have no idea who I supported.
No, I don't, but I don't know, it's a little, you know, for anyone who has any, who knows what's going on and has witnessed the last ten months of what the three of you have been up to up here. I'm sorry, can make a, I'm speaking.
Yeah, go ahead and speak.
I'll speak.
Go ahead, speak.
Okay, and these are the photos. Okay, without our knowledge, and they were sent to him without context. That's why you didn't get context, okay? And everything was going great. You loved Daniel Ferris when everything was going great, but as soon as he started not recommending projects, now we have.
No, he actually overstepped on the Graham property. That was the first time, and ever since then, he has not been doing his job. And he has been influencing, he has been influencing other Planning Board members. They've been intimidated, there have been staff members who have, have been uncomfortable. So he is not doing his job.
And what was your purpose in sending him pictures of us?
Dan and I are friends. Or we were, okay, we were friends. Oh, my gosh.
Yes. Let's, let's keep this amongst the board. And do you have anything to add, Madam Mayor Pro Tem?
I just would like to say that I have not recommended anyone, and I don't know what your statement is with the last ten months that the three of us have been up to, but you have a right to your opinion, but you do not have the right to tell me what my opinion should be. And you cannot assume, make an assumption, make an accusation as to what that is, what I am thinking, what I am doing, without any knowledge, but just to make a blatant statement such as you made, because I don't know what we're up to, maybe you do, and maybe you would like to tell me what we're up to, but.
Shh, we're trying, please.
I think that the meeting now is out of order because you are allowing people from the audience to disrupt the conversation. Excuse me?
The meeting is not out of order, we're still having a civil conversation.
You're allowing people, you're allowing people to be rude during the process, and you made a statement at the beginning of the meeting regarding outbursts from audience members.
I have.
And all I am saying right now, and I'm not gonna say anything else, is that I have not made any statement as to who should or should not, who should be appointed to the board, and I have not indicated anything that you stated with regard to Ann Simpson being appointed to the board. And once again, I have that opinion, you have an opinion, but you cannot tell me what mine is, what I am thinking, what I am doing, or make blatant accusations against me as were stated in your statement.
Can I get a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor? All opposed? Thank you, this meeting is so adjourned.